Be nice. And Pearl was not able to take that period. Alright. We're not quite ready. It's not your trip. When you say you go to the lake where you saw this. It is called Lake Sundown, so if you know where Centerville is.
Right, correctly correct.
Yeah, I'm close on that. Wow, cool. You're close to them. We're playing this way.
Yes.
Cool. That would really quiet it. Alright. Uh, call the roll.
Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt? Yep. Taylor? Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Alright, before we. Uh, ask for motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, before we do that, I would like to move that we would move the public comments from section six. Up to right before the consent agenda between three and four, please, just so that our constituents have a chance to. Opine. On action items. Anything want to weigh in on, and also I would like to move to add. Uh, Renata Dara's contract to. Um, the final action item, so I guess we could make that G.
Okay, I have a motion to. And then the agenda. Do I have a second?
Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt? Yep. Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Yes. So I will take motion. Can Mary take care of the? Motion?
Yep, uh, agenda and motion, right?
Great, yep.
Yep.
So we're off to three now.
Yep.
Okay, uh, presentations, celebrations, and reports, some remain as report.
Absolutely, so Billy and his team have been working hard this summer and uh, on an annual basis, we have. Uh, Director of Buildings and Grounds come in and kind of just give an update, uh, with there being so many projects that are going on. It felt like it was important for Billy to come in and share a lot of the great things that are going on, uh, this summer.
Great.
Yeah. Can I say this?
Hi, everybody, y'all know me, so these are gonna be quick and easy, so. Uh, we decided to put more lockers in the middle school this year and we built a new section for lockers, I think we're gonna have twenty total lockers in that. Uh, we have that done, it's ready to go, the lockers will be put into place on twenty second. Um, we also completed the wall on the stage at the elementary, we closed the stage so we can have another classroom. In that area and today the air conditioner was fixed and working in that area now, so. Uh, we're very happy about that, so. Uh, started with playground earlier this year and Mother Nature hasn't been very good to us and we're still in the process trying to get that done. Uh, we're trying to get the guy back, finish digging out, so we'll start putting the rubber back down. Uh, we're hoping that's soon, so. Uh, resurfaced the new gym, it's the brand new gym just resurfaced. And we started the two other gyms today, they'll be done tomorrow. Um. Where am I at here? Resurfaced the track, they started that, they've got the resurfacing done, all they have left is the track to mark the numbers and lines and everything. It looks amazing, please don't go on it, it's gotta be, nobody can touch that for quite some time. Uh. Uh, Walsh has started their door position switches, I don't know if you guys know what that is, if somebody props a door open, this sets an alarm and will send. Probably Derek and. Joshua and me at a text saying, hey, you got a door popped open in a certain area, so we can make sure that door stays locked and shut at all times. They also put in, I always say it wrong, uh, distress buttons, did I say that right, under the secretary's desk? So when they push that button, it's supposed to lock the doors, all of our doors are locked at all times, but this is like a secondary, make sure it's all locked. And they don't have to get up and move the tripod side, it's like in a bank. Where they have it, so, and that's made us, they're doing that, um. They will start the elementary after this. And then, right now, as like Joshua said, my team has just knocked it out of the ballpark this year. We're ninety percent done at the high school and it looks amazing, uh, they're probably around fifty percent done at elementary, maybe a little more. Um, middle school, we got all carpets done, so I usually consider that about fifty percent, so all we have is a piece of tile. Uh, we've done some work. On the mini splits, we had to come back in and put new pumps on them. They're almost done, and they start the elementary group on the. Gym tomorrow, so, a lot of projects, and there's more than that, that's just the ones I know that are going, so. But, that's all I have.
So, any questions? I have a couple of questions. Go for it. This is okay?
Yep.
Um. Now that we've actually had some rain. It's, it appears that the drainage district is working.
Yes.
That's just outside looking.
We just, we have to be really conscious on cleaning the drain covers out. Uh, you can tell when we have done and it fills up, and if we have a big rain, it fills it in also, but other than that, it's working amazing, so.
Right, good. Um, I've. Got a little pushback from some parents about the school records and sporting.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up, I just missed that. We are putting a seventy-five inch TV in the middle school. That will put the records, like a, it's kind of a rolling, it'll show them some of the records on it, so. Uh, that's our project right now, we're gonna be putting that in, that'll be running by the time they start back in school, so.
Great. So the next time I run into.
Yep.
Parents.
Yes, you can. Yep.
Celebrating that.
Mm-hmm.
Installation.
Yeah.
And then the mini splits, is this a reaccompanying theme, is it just part of doing business?
I'll get into it, when they put them in, they put in. If anybody knows what a condensating pump is, if you don't, it's, it's a pump that takes the water out of the drain, out of the pan. And gets rid of, well, they put in two small ones, of course, and if you know how a furnace works, they fill up with dust in the fall or the winter. Then in summer they get wet and that condensating pump comes all that dust right into the pump. What we're doing is we're installing pumps that we can maintenance ourselves, we pull them out, clean them, put them back together, the old ones didn't have that. I went in college, it was just a small mistake on their part, putting in a tiny pump. And they're not cheap, they're, but they're worth their money, so, uh, we have to go around. Like in the summer and the spring, when it starts getting warm and the air kicks on, we go in, clean them out, and everything works perfect, so.
So. You have to do that, that's all?
Yep.
Are you waiting until they kind of break down to do it?
No, 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 we're doing it. I'm kind of doing them in a phase, we did ten the very first time, then we just did fifteen, now I have like fifteen more to put in, so, I mean, after this next fifteen, they'll all be in, so.
And that's just your plan?
That's just in the store, we're the only place we have many splits.
Did you put a mini split? On the stage?
No, that's actually the old heat pump, the compressor we banned in it, and the reason it went bad is because they couldn't control the heat from the gym. Cause all we had was a curtain, remember? And it burned out the compressor, so.
Oh, sure.
They come in, once we got the wall done, we had to put the compressor back in, and you can ask Laura issues what they're working day is, basically. But it's another thing where the doors on the stage have to be shut.
Sure.
I mean, that, that's a, I mean, I caught two doors open today that, it just, people don't think about when they open a door, that it's like eighty-five degrees down in the basement of the gym, so.
Right, okay, very good. Uh, great job.
Thank you, sir.
So I have to tell you.
Oh.
When we have events, like the music event.
Mm-hmm.
You posted. Or musical or. Restful. I walk around with my chest out, I'm so proud of. The facilities. How they're kept up, it's, it's remarkable.
I have a good team member that goes around to different sports and different schools and he reports back to me, tells me how proud he is of our school.
Yeah. Yes, it's a tip of the cap, it's, it's remarkable.
I, I seriously, I told Joshua once, this is, I have one of the greatest teams, you cannot beat my team, there's nobody in this, in my world that would be able to beat my efforts. Uh, I don't have to think, I don't have to worry. When I ask him to do something, it's done, I mean, it's, I don't even go and check, so.
That's great.
It's an honor to be able to work with people like that.
Yeah, absolutely. So. Moving on, I guess. Uh, consent agenda.
Uh, PSYAC committee.
I'm sorry, PSYAC committee.
That's okay, so we had a PSYAC, PSYAC stands for School Improvement Advisory Committee. And Iowa Code says that you need to have an annual basis, uh, gain input from your, your patrons. We had that meeting on June tenth and, uh, we had ten people in attendance. Uh, I gave information regarding the district strategic plan and Ms. Kraus and Mr. Rubel gave information regarding. Critical data points, uh, over the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, successes and also areas for improvement. Uh, we gained a lot of information from our PSYAC and I just wanted to kind of go over some major bullets tonight, just to kind of create awareness for you guys. Um, and then ultimately, what are we gonna do with this information, it's important that, you know, and just get the information, yeah, thanks, we, you know, we check it off the list. But we actually do something with that information gained. Um, and really ultimately is, is we are starting with our district leadership team to talk about the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So it's timely that we're gaining input, not only from the strategic plan, the results that we received twenty-three, twenty-four, but what are our patrons saying? So that is informing the decisions that we make moving forward. Uh, and some of the things that we talked about, or that we gained, uh, is making sure that we have clear support for the implementation of the strategic plan. They ultimately talked about. Implementation fatigue and making sure that as we are supporting all of our employees with this strategic plan, making sure that we're intentional in supporting, that we don't have burnout. Uh, that was identified a couple of times. Uh, another, uh, topic that was discussed is serving our graduates, maybe year one after graduation and or year five. Uh, and did we prepare them? What successes have they accomplished or seen and or what failures maybe have they seen? And how can that information that we receive from our graduates inform our future decisions? I thought that was a really, um, powerful point that, uh, somebody on our PSYAC committee identified. Um, how can we continue to provide extensions, opportunities for students that have already demonstrated proficiency? I think that could be a conversation that's worthy of discussing at a K-five level. Um, all the way from our kindergartners and all the way up through our twelfth graders is, yes, you may be proficient, but how will we continue to grow you and challenge you and, uh, those types of things? I think that is identified also in our strategic plan. Um, transitions, uh, parents and patrons talked about transitions from fifth to sixth grade and eighth to ninth grade. Continue to be a challenge, either socially, emotionally, academically, so how are we building intentional supports to making sure that we're supporting our, our students? During those transitional years, uh, was something that was discussed. And then the last thing, and this was echoed in multiple statements, but relationships are foundational to our success. Uh, and, and our families recognize that, our strategic plan identifies that. And, and we know that, and our parents identify times where the relationship between the student and the teacher was alive and well. And their student succeeded through that school year. And the PSYAC committee also identified times when that relationship, for whatever reason, was fractured and broken. Uh, and they didn't have as successful of a school year. So I think that's really important that we look at the things that they identify. And how does that fit into our strategic plan, is it already in our strategic plan, then what are we doing to correct those measures that they have to make, so? I don't have answers tonight for you, but I thought it was important for me to share out what our PSYAC, uh, said. And then ultimately, our plan is, is to have meetings, we actually have one starting Thursday this week to talk about, so this is the information we have, what are we gonna do about it?
Any questions? And then I guess we didn't move communications up, right?
Public comment?
Public comment. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I.
Wait, before you start, can you tell me what your last name is?
Which? S C H L I C H.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, I just wanted to thank you, I reached out to Pete and for our situation, which was open enrollment plus in situations. Heard with a couple, um, congresspeople to kind of see what the resolution could be, and so once we went through and got it built past. Being as close to August where I graduated from Ogden in two thousand eight, um, live here on the line, I really wanna make it stay here, um. My whole family's here, I don't think anybody's ever really left this way, if we did, we moved back, um. And so it was really exciting after talking with Kelly and she was really the cheerleader of helping me find path and getting me where I needed to be to find a resolution for kids that are. Really close to the Ogden line, but the other schools are left here. So I really appreciate, you know, the fact that it's there, discussions have been had, and, you know, the kids will benefit a lot more.
Okay, so. Um, thank you for your comments, um, we're kind of restricted in responding.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not being rude.
Nope, I get it.
Alright, so. Um, consent agenda. Any more questions? Um, it's a consent.
Consent agenda honestly was pretty standard, uh, there was a number of new hires, those are really just our annual extracurricular positions that you're seeing, the number of. Uh, really decides that there was nothing out of the sorts from the consent agenda, I didn't feel.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Awesome. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Yes. So on to action items, do we want to go chronologically and address the issue over?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, radio system upgrade.
Yeah, so our current radio system is an analog system and, um, we had a meeting earlier this year with our current vendor. And we've been having some issues with our analog, it working intermittently, sometimes it will work, sometimes it won't. Sometimes, um, we will have issues of communicating and we weren't sure if it was the chargers or if it was the actual system. We went ahead and got some batteries and that helped a little bit, but we're still having communication breakdown with our radios and walkie-talkies within the district. The recommendation would be is, is to ultimately go from an analog system to a digital system. And that digital system will improve communication across the district. Um, it will have us. We will have twenty-two walkie-talkies across the district, so we will have them with directors, principals. Um, our buildings and grounds, transportation, they will be in our buses, et cetera. And the digital system will allow for, uh, improved communication, a longer range. And it also has the ability to put a channel on there specifically that would connect to law enforcement. So that would be Ogden as well as Boone. Uh, so if there were an emergency, obviously we put in preventative measures with the Sears radio, the, uh, emergency buttons. And if we have something going on at a location that is. Besides those, we can quickly change to that channel and it would become live on, uh, those dispatch, so. Ultimately, for the price that it is identified, that you guys saw in your board packet, I think the fact that we have consistent, reliable communication. And it is improving the overall safety within our district, is something that I think that I, I would like you guys to hopefully move forward with.
Questions? Comments?
If there's no questions or comments, I would move to approve the radio upgrade from unplugged wireless. I'll settle second one.
Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yep.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Yes. Uh, student handbooks.
So annually, uh, we're, we're in that time of year where, uh, we are updating our, our handbooks, our principals and directors updated, so we had. Amy updated the elementary, Derek on about day one. It was updating the middle school, high school handbook, and then Reed Smith also on day one was updating our, our activities handbook. Ultimately, uh, with them, two of the three being fairly new to that position, ultimately it was a lot of name changes and or if there was any legislative changes that needed to be addressed in the handbook. They were updated accordingly. I think it's important for us to get our directors and principals time to be within our system to identify what changes they would want. And, um, if there were changes at the middle school, high school and or at our activities, they have a year of understanding the system. Before they are really making a significant recommendations on handbook changes. So, for the most part, pretty standard changes, Amy, was there anything besides some legislative changes that occurred at the elementary?
Okay.
I just noticed one thing, and the only reason I noticed this is because we're approving this. Policy revision also, I think there might be a little discrepancy in the activities handbook versus our board policy about Wednesday night.
Okay.
I think, and I'm just going from my notes, cause I don't have them to look up, sorry. Um, I think in the activities handbook, it says nothing past six fifteen, and I think our board policy says six.
Yep, and the five oh eight two is what you're talking about, and it does say that we have an open night, it does state six o'clock on that, so.
So I didn't know if those needed to match, like, I mean, whichever one.
They do, and I would say that our handbook needs to align the board policy, so we'll make sure that we make that change. I don't know if we can make a, if you guys approved the handbooks, if we can make a recommendation, knowing that that changes one too.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we'll just work with Reed to make sure that they align.
I didn't notice that early enough.
That's a good catch.
You will call, so.
No.
Um, I just have a little. Two cents worth, not that big of a deal, I'm still gonna vote to approve this, but. Um. Twelve months from now, since we have a lot of new people. But, um, with. Our strategic plan, vision statement, vision statement, and core values. I think it would make sense that. When people open up. The handbooks, there is embedded language in the handbooks of our core values. You know, so for describing, for example, what our educational philosophy is. That there is reinforcement with. Those core value language in that paragraph, for example. And, and then just posting them on the handbooks, the core values, it makes sense as well. And they may have been, I may have missed them.
I think Amy maybe did and we just didn't get there, but that, that's a point, well, I'll take it.
Just.
I noticed it in Amy's after I submitted mine and then she had submitted, I saw hers on the board minutes, so I thought, yeah, at least we're trying to give her an input also, yeah.
So it's a kind of a counter.
For the intro.
No, I get it, I mean, you're on the job for hours and then all of a sudden you're doing that, so I get it, that's all.
I agree.
I get it. Uh, any other comments or questions?
So I would move to approve them. And would be, yeah, pending that one, they'll change to match.
I'll second one.
Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yep.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Yes. I can point you.
Yeah, so Melissa took the lead on this and really did a great job with updating the employee handbook. There is really, as identified in your guys' packets, really there was, uh, three major changes in there, I would say they're major, I, I think they're actually just subtle changes. But the first one would be create one sick leave type for employees, uh, we previously had personal leave and family leave. And if anybody has been in education for a while, ultimately if you have a young family and you use your family leave, what that ultimately did is. Do I lie and put in sick leave for myself, knowing that I'm taking care of my family? And as a district, at the end of the day, a leave is a leave. I mean, honestly, I don't know if I personally care if you're gone with your kids or if you're personally sick, you have been allotted a month. So let's remove that barrier of being untruthful and just a leave is a leave. So that was one recommendation, uh, in the handbook. The second is, uh, sick leave payout, uh, previously we were paying out after somebody exceeded a hundred and twenty days. We were paying out twenty dollars and there was a cap, and I believe that cap was three thousand dollars, if I recall. What we're trying to do is incentivize, but also be fiscally responsible, so we're increasing that from twenty to twenty-five dollars for that payout. And we're removing the lifetime cap. Ultimately, people that have been, all been in community schools for a long time, um, the, the, the question is, is I've already had all these and I'm only getting twenty dollars. And I get capped out at a certain time, what incentivizes me from not calling it sick? So removing that lifetime cap potentially, but I don't know if twenty-five dollars is enough, but we're trying to be fiscally responsible as well. Um, so that's kind of an incentive for our employees. And then, uh, I believe the last one would be, uh, personal day leave payout. We issued two personal leaves per year, they can have a max of five. And they can choose to get paid out on those. Um, it was ninety dollars and we're trying to just be in a little bit more alignment and or competitive with even what we're paying our substitutes for those days. So we increased that just, uh, uh, twenty-five dollars, and that's something that we can look at on an annual basis, do we need to increase that more for that personal leave? I believe that is all the significant changes for the employee handbook.
Questions, comments? Or any motion?
I'll move to approve. I'll second it.
Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Yes. Uh, the policy revisions.
Absolutely, this is the time of year where, uh, legislative session is completed. And now we are getting guidance from our attorneys or the Iowa School Board Association. Uh, usually every Jan-, uh, excuse me, July, they give us recommendations on what are required policy changes and or what are recommended. Based off of legislative changes and or federal changes. This is simply what you guys received in your packet, a first reading, uh, of the, the changes, obviously then we would come back in August with some second, uh, reading of those changes. And there's a lot, there's a lot of policy in there.
Any questions, comments?
I mean, I'll just go ahead and say, I'm not super thrilled about the changes in, uh, five oh one one two, but I talked to Joshua earlier and I know that's just a title. I mean, it's a title nine change and it might not even be, so. We can talk about it in the knowledge.
Okay.
So I'm okay with letting the first reading go on, is that there? And then we can come back to it.
So Title One, or Title Nine, excuse me, um, it was the United States Department of Education and it, it was supposed to come in back on August first. Uh, there are some states that are trying to put an executive order in to say that, uh, to block the Title Nine changes. That our attorneys are recommended that we do first reading, if that block is actually accepted at the higher courts. Then we would not proceed with the second reading in August. Um, if. They do not get the injunction, then at least we have completed the first reading and then we can have a further discussion on the second reading before we, um, take a motion on that. So that is the recommendations of our attorneys, and because there is so many changes with Title Nine. We actually signed up for some professional development that we're gonna be investing in later this month, so. I think we will have time to find out what the high courts are gonna do, are they gonna do an injunction? And it's gonna give us also an opportunity to have a deeper understanding on what the changes for Title Nine are.
Anybody else?
Questions?
Is this an action?
Yeah, sure. So I will move to approve the first reading of. All of those. Please tell me I don't have to read them.
And Jim, we said the last two.
And Jim, we said the last two, thank you, Pete.
I'll second one.
Bergstrom?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yep.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle?
Yes. Uh, open enrollment, classic.
Absolutely, I got a packet that I wanna share with you guys and have a discussion tonight, so that you guys are informed, one of those policy changes. Uh, is actually, uh, regarding open enrollment transportation. So, I wanted to be able to have this discussion with you guys tonight, so that you guys are informed. I did share this with you guys ahead of time, but a lot of times, um, I think a narrative would really help a lot with that, so. I'm gonna just simply walk through the pages tonight with you guys and be able to answer your questions, so that then you guys can take action on, on open enrollment transportation, so. Um, what I did is, is we have, I believe, don't quote me on exact numbers, but we have nearly two hundred students that are open enrolled at Ogden. Uh, two hundred open enrolled in, about forty out, so we're plot positive about one sixty. I went ahead and went into Google Maps and plotted every open enrolled student, uh, their, their resident, uh, home, so that is the first map. Just so you guys have an awareness of that we get students from Ames to Crimes to Jefferson, and then obviously we get some of the, the pilot bound the box home, et cetera. But that's just a, a kind of a visual representation of all of our open enrolled students. Any questions regarding that first page? What I did is I actually zoomed in a little bit more, so House file twenty-two seventy-eight really has some criterias about if you are going to increase your open enrollment transportation. It has to ultimately be two different criteria. Criteria number one would be is, is that they are within two mile radius of your current boundary. The second criteria that they identify is that the open enrolled district needs to be closer than the resident district. So this map that I gave you guys is ultimately, you can see the boundaries of Ogden Community. So this map that I gave you guys is ultimately, you can see the boundaries of Ogden Community Schools. And I put a green line on here, the green line ultimately identifies that they. Um, if they are on that boundary. They are, the resident district is closer. So an example would be is Perry is closer than Ogden. Woodward Granger is closer than Ogden. We actually have a small section of United, and we have Boone onto our eastern portion. The pink area that I identified would actually be Green County as well as Southeast Valley. And they actually have two criteria that actually do meet the criteria of House File twenty-two seventy-eight. So there is a section, about a two mile section, that runs um over on the west portion, that is Green County. And then our northern boundary, which is Southeast Valley. Does that map make sense to everybody? What I simply did then is I went in to Google Maps and the information that we had, and I am marked identified. Um, how close is it to go from Ogden to their resident home? Versus how close is it to go from their home to if they were to go to their resident district, and I calculated that via Google. Some information, because we haven't received guideline from the state, is is it as a crow flies, or is it actually roads travel? I went ahead and made it an executive decision, I said, as it needs to be roads traveled. Because somebody isn't gonna cut through, you know, certain rivers and those types of things, so. Um, while that green portion that you guys see would be kids that are within two miles, but their resident district is closer, so they would not qualify in House File twenty-two seventy-eight. So just as an information. The next page aligns, that pink portion aligns, and these would be our students and our families that beat both of those criteria. Um, you can see in the kind of the the right-hand side, the miles to Ogden versus the miles to their resident district. So we have some, which would be like Boone County, uh, we actually have one student, and it's just interesting now where they are at. But uh, it's only four point one miles to Ogden versus if they went to Boone High School, it'd be five point four. So they potentially would qualify, and you can see a high number of Southeast Valley. We have one student, even, I went off a twenty-three, twenty-four school year, so we do have one graduating student that would be six point one miles to Ogden. Versus twenty-five point six to Southeast Valley, a difference of nineteen point five miles. So you can see how the student potentially would benefit by actually being able to come to uh the open enrollment district. A total, I grand total that up, there's twenty-six students and seventeen stops uh that are qualified in that pink portion. Any questions regarding the information so far?
With these two pages, since it's got student data, these two are most likely confidential.
They are confidential, yeah, so I've only given this to the board, and I haven't given anybody else's information, because it does have student private information regarding that, so thank you for stating that. Iowa Association of School Boards, I reached out to them and just asked a couple of questions, and they shared a really nice transportation, because I think some of the things that you need to be aware of is. What is the ultimate cost and how does this impact the general budget? Um, one thing that I wanted to really discuss with you guys is transportation equity. Now, I'm not sure if you guys are aware of this, but it's an appropriation that went in fact, I think in twenty twenty. Uh, and it was for school districts that had a large geographical area. And their transportation costs were significantly higher than schools that are maybe a small, um, a high population. So an example being maybe a a Urbandale has a small, cheap uh area, and they're highly populated. So their transportation costs potentially are going to be less than somebody that is really wide, a large geographical area. Because of the amount of uh square miles that they're covering. The transportation equity is an appropriations bill that comes out on an annual basis, so it's not guaranteed. But ultimately, what they do is they figure out your average cost per student. And if you are higher than the state average, they're gonna try and give you additional funds to help support that. The thing that um Iowa Station, Iowa Association of School Board, as well as Department of Ed said is is. You cannot guarantee that you're gonna receive this, because it is proportional based off of everybody else's increased transportation cost. Um, so we hope that Ogden would be, well, I don't hope, but if. If we, our costs are higher than the state average, we are hoping then that uh this appropriations would help backfill some of that lost. Um, re- excuse expenditures, because our transportation costs are going up. Um, during the tw- twenty, two thousand twenty-two, we got twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, it was kind of a green line that I kind of put in there. But you can kind of see in here, miles that we travel. Um, our overall cost, it says operation cost, and it's on the first page, I highlighted it, and unfortunately, the way it printed, it ended up being on that second page. But we have seen over the last couple of years, and this is miles uh travel. Five dollars and seventy cents up to four dollars and thirty-five cents. And that is included, and that is the expenditures that we see. So that would be um salaries, it's our benefits, it's our fuel, it is our wear and tear, it's our parts. Um, it is a a devaluation of our actual fleet. Um, and ultimately, we spend about four to five hundred thousand dollars on an annual basis. Uh, of our general budget for transportation. They then actually take that, divide it, and it ultimately says that per mile that you travel, this is about the cost, if that makes sense. Okay, uh, the next thing that I provided for you guys is a map of the state of Iowa and all of the uh. The school districts in the state of Iowa. The orange school districts, they are, their transportation cost per student is less than the state average. Whereas the blue are higher, so I just thought it was an interesting map. Um, I put some information up above where our cost la- last year, I believe the state average was four oh, four hundred and. Twen- yeah, transportation aid uh pupil levy, that is kind of going down towards the bottom, and I underlined it, it was four hundred and twenty-one dollars and ten cents. And our cost, I believe, last year I have up top was four hundred and forty-three dollars, so we were higher, so that's where that. Um, transportation equity kicked in, and with that transportation equity, it actually reduced our cost down to four oh four, because we got twelve thousand. I did some math and calculation for you, so this is just a kind of a nice little map that shows who is actually exceeding the state average for transportation, and then who is not.
So. How did you get the four, you know, four oh three seventy?
So the four forty-three seventy was a calculation that is taking our overall transportation cost divided by our uh our certified enrollment. They actually, yeah, I believe so, it is our certified enrollment, it is not student served, it's actually our our resident student.
So, and back to the graphs.
Yep.
There is.
Does it provide a?
Transported. Almost double, even triple. So. We need that more graph.
So no, uh, that's a great question, and the difference between those is is students transported versus our resident students, our certified enrollment. So our certified enrollment is gonna be around six hundred students, but our transported students is like two seventy, three hundred. Because we don't transport all students, because uh maybe they are a, they live in town. So they, that, there's actually a difference between that, if that makes sense there.
Very good.
So.
We would have, we would have to do all students.
The way that the state does the calculation, it is not a student served, so they don't actually take in consideration our open enrolled students. Because A, previously, they were never a consideration for transportation. But what they would do is is your resident students, and they figured out that per pupil cost. Versus that one map that you were looking at, it was this, who is actually taking advantage of transportation.
Seems transported.
Yes. All students.
And you would have to use the all students as the standard in this discussion.
That's what the state does, so if we're trying to standardize and look at what is Ogden's cost comparative to Perry's cost comparative to Woodward Granger. It would be the students that are your certified students.
Yep. Because you get private taxes on all students versus just the train, transport students.
All resident students.
Oh, resident students, yep.
State funding all students. You're comparing all this.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Good conversation.
So.
Ultimately, I think one of the things you guys will know is is how much is this going to cost if we were to increase our open enrollment transportation? And um, I went ahead and put some things in here, and you know, you got a cost of five dollars and forty cents per mile. We could use that calculation, and we think it's gonna be fifty to sixty thousand. I don't think that's realistic to use that calculation, because I think embedded inside of there is actually our. Um, salaries and benefits, and speaking to Denny. If we were to approve this, or you guys were to approve this, we don't anticipate increasing another route, because A, we can't find a driver. That's just a reality, and B, we don't want to increase our fleet. We have nine buses right now, and we need four buses any given night to be able to run our activities events with junior high females, junior high boys. Varsity boys and varsity girls, so we really need to keep our fleet to uh nine, because we don't have dollars to buy another bus. And even if we did buy another bus, we may not have a bus driver. So if we were to increase and say, yes, we're gonna move forward, you guys are gonna move forward with open enrollment transportation. We need to figure a way to do that by doing five routes. So in those calculations and figures, we can't go with five dollars and forty cents per mile, because. That is taken in consideration salary and benefits, those are already embedded inside of there. So really, the additional cost that you're gonna see, I tried to bold, and that's fuel costs, parts and repairs. There could be conversation about vehicle depreciation, because naturally, you're gonna put more miles on that vehicle, so it's gonna depreciate. And have, you know, wear and tear on it a little bit more. It's really hard, because it's, I'm trying to put in objective number on something that's subjective, because we don't know. Um, so what I did is, is I went ahead and said projected miles. And I think if we were to pick up the students that qualify that were in that pink portion. It's probably gonna increase twenty-five to thirty-five miles per route. So that is in the morning, and then another in the afternoon, so if you start to do that math, then follow me. Twenty-five to thirty-five miles equals fifty to seventy-five, or fifty to seventy miles per day. Ultimately, per year, it's gonna be in that eighty-five hundred to twelve thousand ranges are miles. We, last year, had forty-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-three route miles. So what I did is, I said, if we were to increase by twelve thousand, that's an increase of around twenty percent miles. So we would have a hundred and twenty percent more miles, if that, yes, twenty percent more. So what I did is, I said, okay, what is our fuel cost, what is our parts cost, and what is our repair cost? And can I increase that by twenty percent? If I were to do that, I believe that it's gonna be around ten thousand dollars. So we have a window of ten thousand dollars up to, if I go per mile, fifty-four thousand. I don't think the fifty-four thousand is realistic. So if you're wanting to know how much is this gonna cost, it's somewhere in that range, I think it's probably closer to ten thousand. I mean, just if I'm being fully honest with you, I think it's gonna be around ten thousand dollars if we were to increase and pick up those students. Any questions regarding that information that I provided you this far?
Well, going off our. Per student actually transported costs last year, of basically sixteen hundred and forty bucks. If, if we added those, if we just use that number times the number of kids that qualify, that puts you a little over forty-two thousand. To me, that would be the top end, what it could cost. And I think your, I think your ten thousand number is, is a really good. Low estimate, I think it's, it's gonna cost that for sure, how much more than that, I don't know. I don't think, I think you're probably close, I think that's closer than the forty-two, but. I had a nice chat with our state senator on this a while back, and the intent of this entire thing is to have. Districts like Ogden that are doing very well. To get more kids to be able to come to schools like this, so the intent is right. Uh, he readily admits that nothing's perfect on this, and I think this first year is just gonna be a a trial and error si- situation anyway, my role is part of it, for a solution. Because, yeah, we're basically deciding how much money to throw in transportation versus classrooms, and what's the, what's the balance there? It's it's kind of what, what I left it with him as, and then he agreed that that was. Uh, that wasn't the intent, was to make us pick and choose, but that's kind of where we're at this first go around.
Any questions regarding the information that I provided? So our general budget, if we were to increase our transportation to open enroll students that qualify as per House File twenty-two seventy-eight. It could be a range of ten thousand up to forty thousand is probably realistic. The ten thousand figure does not have vehicle depreciation, and we know naturally, our vehicles are gonna have to depreciate a little bit more, because there's gonna be more wear and tear on it. So I think tonight, honestly, is the the board, I I think if you look at ultimately the students, the miles that they need to travel. Oh, you got Ogden that's six, seven miles away versus their resident district twenty miles plus. Um, us picking them up, the students would get, I I think that's beneficial for the students. And this also has a financial implication, and I've tried to outline that to you guys, say, that it is going to cost us some money out of our general budget if we were to make that decision. Um, so I I I think that you have some options here, I think the first option is, is that you don't approve transportation to our neighboring districts. Um, I think option two is, is that you increase transportation into our neighboring districts, and we assume all the financial costs for it. Um, I think option three is, is that we increase the transportation to our neighboring districts as outlined. And there may be some type of a fee structure associated with it. Uh, and then the last one that I've identified is, is there an other that I am not thinking of? Uh, but really, I I see there being three options that the board needs to discuss besides.
I mean, so I, I mean, I probably made most of it about the fact that I, I mean, I I feel like those are out, it's, I know they don't make our district, but. I mean, like Mary said, she's been an awful kid her whole life, and a lot of them are like that, you know, so, I mean, it's hard to pick and choose, because. I guess I do have a little bit of a question, and it's probably not easy, but, like, can you quantify for us, maybe, like, in regards to what Pete was saying? We've gotta choose between transporting these kids and possibly sacrificing, maybe is the right word, you know, classroom things for our residents, right? So is there a sacrifice there, or can we pull it off in transportation without? You see what I mean? Because like, in my mind, I, I mean, my first mind is, go get them, I mean, go get the kids, like, come on, they're our kids, they've always come here, go get them. But we obviously have an application to our residents, so. Can you quantify for us, if, if any, is there a sacrifice?
I'll take a stab at it, and then honestly, I'll go to our SBO and see if she can add to that, but honestly, we got a finite amount of money. Because our number of students that we serve times the the formula, you know, and that's seventy-eight hundred dollars, so. We need to operate a business with eight million dollars a year, and our general budget is where transportation costs are. So right now, the conversation is, is we have already created a, and you guys approve, what we think our annual expenditures are gonna be, so we've created that line item budget. So with that, it is really is, is every dollar in, we're not for profit, every dollar out.
Right.
And if we are to increase our expenditures with something that was not originally on that budget, it might be an alternative. It is a, yes, we're gonna do this, and we know it's gonna cost twenty thousand, that's a quarter to a half of the teacher's salary.
Right.
That's my first response to that, I don't know if you have anything to add from the SBO lens?
Sure, so we've already.
Sure, so we've already anticipated that our UAB is gonna drop around five percent this year because our increased costs um benefit, so we're looking at going from. Twenty-four, twenty-five percent down to nineteen. When we budget, everything goes highest priority to lowest, so the cost that we cannot cut anywhere within that, so salaries and benefits. Are earmarked first, then our utilities because you can't just like turn off the lights. Yeah, and then it just goes down from there, like paying our tuition bills to other districts. And our final one where we do have flexibility is in those resources for students, it's in curriculum materials and it's in. Line item budgets for the buildings to purchase the materials, so that would be where in this first year. That would be the part that would suffer because we've already committed to those other items, the number of personnel and. The benefits that we're offering, those have already been determined and so this would be where that sacrifice would be made. I would probably build it in assuming the twenty percent increase of that ten thousand dollars. Just because I know you guys have mentioned a lot about vehicles depreciating faster, the vehicle depreciation formula is the same no matter what. So that's that's not gonna change anything if we're not in group in increasing our salaries and benefits. Really, it is that fuel costs and parts cost. Uh we've already, Jenny and I have already talked about our annual tire budget, so we should be fine with tires, those are the big expense for transportation. But it would probably be, you know, ten thousand dollars less in either the building budgets or our curriculum budget.
Does that answer your question?
Kinda, I mean, so in your mind, can we afford to just take it on? I mean, maybe that's not fair because it's not really for you to decide and I get that, but like you wrote the checks, so. Like, if we don't charge a guy and we just pick it, pick up the tab, like. Can we, and can we?
Yeah, we're just saying, hey, when you pick out, it would probably be curriculum, really, I mean. When we pick out your curriculum, you have ten thousand less dollars to spend this year than the year before.
How bad is that? Maybe I should ask you that.
That's ten percent of the curriculum budget.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be, I just.
No apologies, this is conversation because it's an important decision.
My first thought on it is. I think it's somewhere in that twenty thousand range it takes this year. My first thought is we take it on as a district this year and reevaluate.
It's not like we're signing up for a multi-year deal with it.
And I think it's, yeah, I think it's just if we have to adjust, it moves forward if we can and I'm sure we will, I'm sure that my guess is that. The rules can change uh this time next year as well, but.
Does anybody not wanna get them? I mean, let's start there, like, I mean, I certainly wanna go get them, I think. My, in my mind, I'm just wrestling with, do we need to charge a added fee to their registration cost or not, is my only question, but Matt, Pete?
I agree with your take that we should go get them, there are kids, I think.
Yeah.
Open enrollment's huge for us, kind of need our hat on it. I think we should try to do what we can for.
So we can start there, like y'all want to get them, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, there are costs to it.
Well, there is, so even since there is.
But there is a cost, so.
Okay. Okay, so we do wanna get them, now we just have to decide, are we gonna pick up the tab? And I I actually, I have no problem with what Pete was suggesting, we take it on this year and then if if we're just like, oh my gosh, that was.
It would also be easier to collect the data on how much it does cost because we have such a wide range of. What it could cost, seeing what it is ends up actually being, actually will give us a better idea of. What the increase to our transportation cost for.
So we receive from the state. How much could be more for one person or for one district? How much can we get?
Seventy-six, maybe, or seventy-eight, I don't know.
There's a new number this year because of based off of eh last year's SS say, so it's gonna be, I think it's close to seventy.
So that. So if we assume that the three hundred and seventy-three dollars. Twenty-two cents per student. For our neighboring district. That is point point seven percent. That we get for the. Since to me it seems like it's. For a cost. Almost five percent.
This this is assuming we don't pay the increased aid from the state which we can't count on, but that would help offset it.
It's already set for the this year based off of last year's numbers, but yes, if if appropriations are there. And we see increased expenditures and we are significantly higher than the state average. We are going to receive more transportation equity to help offset those costs. The advice from the Department of Ed and Iowa Association School Board is just never guarantee it. So you would never wanna put in a line item and say transportation equity because we don't know if it's gonna be there. But yeah, in theory, we're gonna expend for, excuse me, increase our expenditures. Um so we should hopefully get more revenue from the state to offset that.
Okay, so we wanna, let's go ahead and get this part one knocked out, guys, so we wanna get them. Are we saying we want to eat the cost this year?
I noticed there isn't a recommendation, but Pete, you weigh in for what direction are you? Something to go, where where are you?
Ultimately, this is the board's decision. Uh and if I were to do it, I would say that we need to pick up those students and provide transportation and I think that needs to be a fee structure associated with it. Um I think when we're looking at deducting our overall curriculum expenditures. Um I think that it can potentially impact a high percentage of students. It's really hard to quantify and put a fee structure to it when you don't know. I'm throwing a dart at a target and hoping that I hit it, so that's the hard part is is should we provide a fee, should we not provide a fee? And how much should that be? Um so if you're asking me, I would say that yes, we should pick up those students and provide that service. And yes, I view that there should be some type of a fee structure associated with it.
So. I'm bold working here, maybe if we split the cost with those favorites. Um assuming that this three-seven-three is every month. If we're splitting with them, that'd be. One thirty-five-ish. Which one is?
One eighty-five.
I'm sorry. Whatever that number is, um. Divided by months. I'll go back to mine. Twenty bucks a month. If I was a parent, knowing how many trips I would take off if this wasn't available, twenty bucks a month, I'd be like, heck yeah. So. I I'm glad you said what you said because I was. Said, hey, we'll split the cost for you, see what happens. Hopefully, all parties are happy. You know, we wanna win with this experience, so. Door numbers, twenty bucks a month.
I I would like to push back though on like the twenty, on the on the whatever uh month, but I mean, I just feel like they've got. Lunches and some dance and sports, I mean, for me, if you wanna charge a fee, I'm not totally opposed to that, but. I feel like just put in a registrate, make a registration fee, like the textbooks or you know what I mean? And you know, I I I know that, but I just wanted to like clarify that, because like asking people like on fifteen, you owe us twenty bucks, like. Can we not? Yeah, so I mean, I I'm not totally opposed to adding a registration.
When we, when we started sending our boys to. Little kiddos. We would run back and forth a number of times. We started doing that. It's gonna be. We need to move to. So uh it was short. So to ask someone to give two hundred here, whatever the.
I think that's the, right now, that's the rub, we don't know what the cost is and that's I. I like your idea, let's, this year, let's go and get them and let's figure out the best way to track this data for a year. So we know what our costs are and we have something to quantify it, but I think that's. A good point, I think it's probably the right way to go moving forward after this first year, uh that's some type of cost share with uh the non-resident families, but. Uh I think if we just throw a number at it now, we're guessing just as much as anybody and I'd rather. I'd rather we act it with as much good faith as we possibly can, say, you know, now we know our cost.
Do we throw a very low fee at it in year one so that. The implementation of a fee is not a shock to those families in year two. Cause you've picked up their kids for free for a year and then to go in and say, and now it's two hundred dollars. Is that too much of a jump? Do you say it's a one-time fifty-dollar fee? Cause we know that something low. Something that low is definitely going to be more of a cost, just so that it's not a shock.
Sure.
I was just.
If it were. If it were a large number of students, yeah, a large number of families, but I I'm finding it, I don't know.
I'm gonna break over the call, but you're okay?
Is it okay for our transportation to be underway, Sam?
Yes. I'm gonna be very careful here about charging. Any kind of sum without acknowledgement. Because we will get serious trouble with the state for charging on the transportation. You cannot charge more than the cost. When we do business with YSS, we do business with any outside. We have to be very, very, very careful. So I I would be very, very, very careful about this as well. Like Horace said, I I don't think, excuse me, Matt, I don't think he just wants to throw a lot of things for two hundred dollars. I think you have to be very careful about that.
You're saying start low, Ben, if at all.
If at all, yes.
I think there are good points.
Yeah, I think you guys continue to have discussion until your answers are are, your questions are answered and or somebody just needs to make a motion on something. We don't care, so that's ultimately where you guys.
I I intend to. Introducing a charge. In year two, yeah, I have a shutdown. Or to do a good job of communication, say, hey, we're gonna. Travel around here, but there may be. A chunk of cost in year two. One of the, one of the two.
Well, and the whole thing about adding it as a registration fee is it's not like they can't come to split. You can pay it, really, you know what I mean? Like, it's not like, most people, I think, pay those right when they register, but you actually.
You can pay it at any point in the year, you could set up your own payment plan.
Yeah, you see what I mean? So it's not like it's it's a huge, like you have, you know, right?
And would this, this fee would be, yeah, right, so if you have that, yeah.
That's where we have to decide. And it would be an opt-in, so it isn't that everybody of you automatically are open enrolled that we're gonna issue this fee, it would be, I'm opting into the service.
Well, yeah, this, we gotta know that you're gonna be on place anyway, which which actually, let's come back to that, brings us to part two. Um where are we gonna pick them up at?
I I think I wanna make a strong recommendation here and that we need to pick them up. At their own resident as per in-house campus.
Yeah.
Uh. Open enrollment is a good thing for Ogden. And I am just fearful if you have attendance centers that you are, not attendance centers, but a centralized pickup location. We may be picking up a number of students that maybe don't qualify as per in-house file twenty-two seventy-eight.
True, and it's, to me, it's just.
I think you have a huge safety issue of. Are are the parents there to pick up their child, are they not? Can I leave? There's a liability inherently associated with that. So my recommendation would be is is that if you move forward with this, that we are picking up and dropping off at the residence. That is specifically complies with House File twenty-two seventy-eight.
And that's actually what our projections are based, anyway, so.
You have a lot of superintendents you've discussed things with, have you talked about this with them as far as the middle districts?
I have, and to be honest, uh I would say that this was written specifically for Ogden and that we are. There are not allotted districts that meet both criteria.
Yes.
Um yes, there are some that have open enrollment, but their resident school is closer than their open enrollment school. Uh so yes, I shot it out there to try and have conversation and dialogue and really it just falls on deaf ears because it is impacting as people. As much it is gonna impact us, which is okay.
Anybody else, anybody, anything else? Shouldn't we go ahead and make?
Yeah, I I like the small fee structure, just make sure for sure it's below that.
I would, I would actually go ahead and move, let's see, okay, I would move that we. Uh pick up open enrollment students for students to have file twenty-two seventy-eight at a cost of fifty dollars. Per year, per student at the students' home.
No other discussion, I would, I would second that.
Yes.
Merritt.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Van Sickle.
Yes.
Good discussion.
It actually is exciting, I mean, when you think about like it's, some of these kids were to go to Southeast Valley, they'd be on the bus for four hours, it's just ridiculous, so. I mean, we want them to be here, so.
Policy review.
Yeah, absolutely, policy review, there was five oh seven point eight, five oh, uh I think it was five oh eight point two, honestly, it's just in that kind of cadence that we're reviewing. And just looking at a policy review, I don't think there was really any significant changes inside of there.
Um I have a motion first, I already made our policies. Through, by the way.
I moved.
Second.
Berkshire?
Yes.
Merritt?
Yep.
Thompson?
Yes.
Van Sickle.
Yes, and now to.
Added action item, which is Ms. Dara's contract, so. Ms. Dara, um you guys actually approved her contract in April. And she was slated to be a teacher for our business program in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Uh she communicated to me on June thirtieth that her family is experiencing some hardship. And she requested to be uh released from her contract due to a possibility of having a salary increase. Due to honestly getting an administrative position. Um I contacted the Board of Education Examiners, reached out to our attorneys. Um and just kind of got some guidance, I issued a letter to her as per our board policy. Uh four oh seven point two, it outlines if somebody is to want to get out of the contract, here are the things that you need to do. Uh Ms. Dara has successfully accomplished those things. And ultimately, because she's done that, in four oh seven, it says that I need to bring it to the board and you guys need to release her from her contract. Um one of the criteria is, is are you able to find a suitable replacement? And with it being July eighth, it's gonna be hard to find, I guess the question is, is what is a suitable replacement?
Somebody with a close.
Yeah, I I mean, I have a responsibility to our all good students and I think that due to the nature of the hardship that she was identifying. I have reached out to other schools that are in close proximity to find out if anybody would be interested in still. Providing mathematics through the use of technology. And I do think that we have a neighboring district that is interested in partnering with us, it's gonna be interesting. Um but I think it is an effective way of getting a certified teacher teaching mathematics uh to our students. I wanna backtrack, I said she was hired as a business, she also had a math degree. I wanna backtrack. I said she was hired as a business. She also had a math degree. When we have no available options for math, we had zero applicants. We internally did an internal transfer and moved her from business to math. So with her void, even though she was hired with the business, it now leaves us with a void of mathematics and business. Um, I think this is, it speaks just to the nature or the current climate of public education and teachers. I would say Ogden is a good school district. I mean, we are doing a lot of great things in our school district. We are close to a lot of metro areas. And it's, it should be an area where we can attract and retain high-quality people, and we can't get any applicants. So we need to, um, do, I need to do a better job of recruiting and retaining our s- our teachers. Um, and we have to think outside the box on how are we gonna serve our students. Uh, and so Derek and I are gonna actually have a conversation with me later on Wednesday on what that might look like. So my recommendation to you would be is, is knowing that Ms. Dara has done what I outlined in four oh seven point two um in a letter to her, and knowing that I think we have a lead on a suitable replacement. My recommendation would be is that we do release her from her contract, but ultimately, that does establish a precedent. And maybe it's a case-by-case basis based off of that hardship, but um ultimately, the decision is at the board's hands. It's not my decision.
Um, any questions?
It's an unfortunate situation all year round, I think, but I will, I'll make the motion to release her from her contract.
Awesome. Berkshire.
Yes.
Merritt, yep, Thompson.
Yes.
Van Sickle.
Yes. We're not given that.
Nope, July off. Um, Warren Kellen.
I have two notes from July. A few notices in our legislative priorities are selected. We usually hit those, but I think just with how our P felt early, they didn't have those out yet, so we'll do those in August this year.
I received an email from Rural Schools of Iowa, their advocacy, and it it came today. So it was impossible to get those to you guys, so we'll just bring those through August, um, and hopefully make those uh for you guys.
The work session with uh city council.
Yep.
Is that at six thirty?
So right now, I had that on and I reached out to Emily and just haven't received a response, but if you guys could mark your calendars as a work session. It's a partnership with the city of Ogden, and we're just gonna come together and just talk about things that are uh their their goals and our goals are aligned, and how can we work together? Uh, so that should be at six thirty. I will inform you guys if it's different, but it's just a work session and it should be at um whatever, city administrative office, city hall. Melissa, you said there was a second item?
That was it. You jumped in to talk about work session.
Wonderful, and superintendent report.
Yep, real quick, um, for Dr. Me tonight, just wanna welcome uh Mr. Carlson, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Oyn. They started July one, uh, so we have a number of new administrators. And then Ms. Jones will be starting on August first, so uh we had a lot of people started last week. Uh, some of them were here, some of them were actually taking some vacation, which I believe it was perfect for them to do uh with July fourth. Annual report, I don't know if you guys have received this, but I was ultimately trying to create one-stop shop for us to capture the great things that are going on in our district. I think it is a marketing tool um as well as just kind of a a great summary. So I did send that out to our patrons and also you guys have a physical copy of that. Wanted to get that to you guys. Class size, I wanna give you guys a heads up that our third grade class right now, um, if you guys recall, kindergarten through second grade, we have three sections. And then in third grade, we go down to two sections is typically working it down. The class size from second to third grade right now is a high number. So I think that if we were to see any really shift in that, we maybe, my recommendation would be that we hire a third-grade teacher. We need to keep a close eye on that. We are getting to a threshold where we are serving twenty eight, twenty nine students in a class. Um, so I just wanted you guys to be aware that I will be working with Ms. Kraus. And if we see really any indication, we may be needing to go that direction, that we can uh effectively support our third-grade students. Online registration will open later this week, so just giving you guys a heads up on that. Uh, Jesse, um, our secretaries, our nurse, they've been working on getting that all up and ready to go. And uh now that we have our handbooks approved, we will be pushing that out later this week, so online registration. And we've done almost everything embedded inside of that. It's gonna be a one-stop shop for our parents, so I think it's gonna be really nice ultimately. Uh, for the most part, one-stop shop. Um, safety updates, honestly, I just wanted to give you guys awareness. We talk about safety on a on a monthly basis. Uh, this is just an update of the document that you guys have seen quite a bit, and then I'll just outline the changes. All right, ultimately, you can see what we're currently doing. The only things that I really changed on there is on the upper right-hand corner where it says Ogden Community Schools Quick Reference Flipbook. I am working with, well, I put this together for next year. It ultimately is a quick response way for our teachers and or anybody that's in the building. If a crisis situation takes place, they can quickly look to that and we can kinda reference it. Um, so this is kind of a sample. Part of the AEA is actually printing those and we will have those ready to go for the start of school year. So that is one change. And then um I put in their update radio system from analog to digital. Uh, so you can see that. And then everything that's in yellow is kinda the work that is being done right now that Billy kind of identified. Uh, the Heartland, excuse me, the Homeland Security Grant is really addressing a number of those things, but is not the the radios. Uh, so any questions regarding safety? Shout out publicly to Melissa, um, getting dollars back from Homeland Security is an act of Congress. It's a federal, it's a federal grant. I get it. Um, they wanna make sure that what we say we're gonna spend money on is what we're actually doing. Um, she has spent countless hours and it's, I'm glad to report that we actually received a check the other day.
Wow.
So we are actually getting some of that Homeland Security dollars and it, the system is working, uh, but there's a lot of baby bloods with anteals. Embedded inside of it. So I I just wanted to publicly recognize Melissa for her patience uh in helping get that done. That's all I got for superintendent report.
Questions, thoughts?
Berkshire.
Yes.
Merritt, yes, Thompson.
Yes.
Van Sickle.
Yes.
It's costing me whether I'm calling my one kid or my two kids.
Yes.
I gotta make the drive.
Yeah.
And I I think about that, um, I think, uh, it's costing the bus money based on stuff, not the number of students. Actually, and also, I'm really keen to do something like, if you have a family.